...in 2017 Board of Education made it to order. Mr. Tepper, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Siskindor.
Here.
Mr. Bruman.
Here.
Mr. Hubner.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Dr. Hine.
Could we all stand for the pledge, please?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two things before we begin. One is I was forced to not be here because I didn't want to go out of town with this family. A lot of people know that his mom has been ill, so it was a great opportunity for the family to be together, so that's why I'm filling in for him this evening. And the second thing is, we have welcomed back Tracy Hubner to fill in for the rest of the year as a board member, and I just asked if she done her mail check out storage. And he said he actually got a new one, so we'll have a bad dream. Thank you. You're welcome. Safety briefing. The only exit I know of is where we came in, so the door where you came in is our exit door. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bruman?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
The minutes 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3 will be taken as a consent agenda. I only think there's a motion to approve 3.1.
I move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 4th, 2017, the Finance Committee of May 12th, 2017, and the regular meeting of May 22nd, 2017.
Under any questions? Is there a question? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item four is correspondence. We have a procedure for public commentary. The correspondence from point one, there's one item that I would like to bring to attention of the board and the committee. I think we may have all received information recently that we had a good favorable rating in the Moody's Local Government Issuing a Comment Report on Forest Hills Schools. He is a detective to the director's office. The highlights are the district has very strong economy and tax base. The median family income equals a robust 160.6% of the U.S. level. There's balanced financial operations, exhibit good financial management, and operations were approximately breaking due to tax base and market. So that's very good, and it's a testament again to Mr. Tepper's staff. Thank you. Are there any other correspondence from the board? From the chair. All right. Procedures for public commentary. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time on the agenda for speakers under public commentary. Individuals who would like to share their opinions or comments concerning the topic on the board agenda should see the beautiful ladies over to my right, and you can fill out a card in a minute. The next item is Representative Tom Brinkman, who will be introduced by Mr. Smith.
As legislative liaison, it's my pleasure to introduce a guest for the evening, Representative Tom Brinkman. Tom is in his sixth term in office as our state representative. Tom's district covers all of Forest Hills, ancient township, village of Newtown, plus territory up north of us. This is particularly important time in the year for legislature, whereas they will be voting on a budget for the next two years by Thursday night. By Thursday night. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Cape Representative Tom Brinkman to give us a legislative update, hopefully pertaining to education issues and anything else that we feel is important.
Well, thank you very much for having me. First of all, thank you for all the good job you do, and for the whole district, because it's great when you represent such excellent school districts. I also represent Merrimont, Indian Hill, Sycamore and Loveland, and Tailwagon the Dog, City of Cincinnati, unfortunately, but that's where I live, and that's what we have to put up with. But you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate that. I did send the budget numbers today to Board Member Smith. I don't know if he shared them, because they are preliminary. There's only one bill we have to pass in the legislature every two years, and that's the budget bill, and that deadline is the 30th of this month. It's been through the House, it's been through the Senate, we're now in conference committee. And the preliminary numbers, I shouldn't say they're not the very beginning numbers, but the numbers as they stand right now actually do look okay. I mean, they're not what you all would want, but they're not a decrease. The governor has it out for TPP, which isn't a big deal for you folks, but people like New Richmond, Sycamore, Princeton, they really depend on that backfill when they got through the personal property taxing. Sorry if the mic's cutting in and out here, I don't know if it's me or whatever. So anyway, we are working on that budget number, and we have to have it passed, we're hoping on Wednesday, and then the governor has to sign it by the end of the month. And then we'll be back in about three months. We go on a little vacation, and then we'll come and fix it. So we'll fix all the mistakes we made, but also what we will fix is the problem that Ohio is facing. Right now, we have, if you look at all the want ads in the state of Ohio, these are above minimum wage want ads. We have about 350,000 to 375,000 jobs wanting. We have, last count, 279,000 unemployed in the state of Ohio. But the problem is, the skills needed for those jobs are not matching with the skills that Ohioans who are looking for the jobs need. My son works at AK Steel. He has a two-year degree at Cincinnati State. He works 56 hours a week. His department needs 100 people. They only have about 67. Sometimes they get up to 71, sometimes they get down to 65. But they'd love for him not to have that overtime. They'd love for him to have a 40-hour-a-week job, but he's doing 56, and he does that three weeks in a row, and then he gets five days off, and then he goes on vacs and does it again. He's making great money. I've been so bold to tell people in previous meetings, and you've told me to stop saying doing that. Needless to say, there's a lot of jobs like that, and we're trying to figure it out. One thing we did was, that directly affects you, was we recently passed House Bill 70, 170. House Bill 170 will, what we're trying to do is, the legislation allows high school students to take an advanced computer science course in place of current math or science courses. Alternately, within it, they could be placed as elective, or you can do a whole curriculum around it. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to get ready for the jobs of the future. And these computer science jobs are many of those 350,000 jobs that are lacking in the state of Ohio. We need to get people's skills there. This is a permissive language legislation. I'll read a little bit more here. It is important to note that adopting computer science standards within House Bill 170 is entirely permissive, meaning that each school, local school district can decide whether they wish to adopt them. Even if adopted by the schools, students ultimately make the final decision. Many students struggle with math and science there before, facing frustration and discouragement while taking classes such as Algebra II. So it is a backoff of Algebra II, so you know. This new option would be critical to the success of the students' high school careers. Additionally, the exposure to computer science would uncover a student's passion for computing that would ultimately lead to a fruitful career. Ohio's employers rely on a qualified and talented workforce, especially in the area of information technology, namely programmers and developers, which remain as in-demand jobs through the state. As you know, many times I've come to you and said I don't like to vote for mandates, and I typically don't. Again, this is permissive, but it is something we need to do, is again, lining up these jobs with the skills. One final thing on that note is, now, there is a force field in between this lineup, and that is the drug problem. And we do find we have a lot of people addicted. I think they said there's 16,000 in Hamilton County that are addicts on the open end of the crisis. We are putting some more money and trying to work on addiction services and treatment, because it is such a big issue. And so that's another thing we're trying to do, because again, we need to get folks out there in the workforce doing well. Charter schools are a big issue. I was sent something about House Bill 220, which I don't think will go anywhere, but I do want you to know that I am for transparency. I think every dollar, that taxpayer dollar, should be able to be audited and exposed to the public, not only the class, but the public, and they can make those decisions on whether it was wisely spent or not. The one thing that I struggle with is, I think every child is valuable. That's not a struggle, but that's, but many of them can't fit into what I would call traditional brick-and-mortar schools, and for some reason, their parents or themselves, they withdraw from education. And that's where I think charter schools can come in, particularly something like ECOG, but also some of the good charter schools. Now, there are some bad ones out there. Again, there's some bad public schools, and that's where you have to have that ability to audit them and make sure they can do it. So while that piece of legislation, I don't know if I'm in favor of, I don't think it'll go anywhere. I am supportive that we do find out where the money is and follow it. ECOG's a very interesting story. I've told Board Member Smith about this. There's a Forest Hills parent who is an ECOG teacher, and I got to know her at my little camp I go to up in Woodland Mound, and her kids go to Forest Hills. And she's also an ECOG teacher, and you know, she struggles with when she pushes the button. Maybe I should just talk louder than that. But anyway, when she pushes the button, she doesn't know if the kid's going to be there or not, but she has helped kids, and she was at 22%. The, I just saw that the ECOG numbers are 38, which I was surprised how high they are. But again, she has kids that have been bullied at their school they go to. Some are taking care of a sick parent, some just don't show up. I mean, face it. Now, I do question some of the ideas of some of the funding model of ECOG. For example, charter schools get $200 per kid for capital, bricks and mortar. ECOG doesn't have bricks and mortar, you know, so that's part of what got them in trouble. There's currently an accountability going on with them. They've been ordered to return $60 million. I don't think they have it. We are probably going to pass some legislation that forces them to put up a $6 million bond, which actually will allow us to get something back, because right now, they could just walk away, the way the current law is structured. And you better get six instead of nothing, $6 million instead of nothing. But accountability is important, but we also have to have those options, because there are some situations where some kids that drop out of the current system, they need to learn, and we need them. We need them in the workforce. And as somebody who's 59 years old, we need them to pay that social security and PERS, so we have our pensions there, too. Final thing I'd like to talk about is, I've introduced a bill, House Bill 181. Now, this is a bill that will really, without being too dramatic, it will really remake testing in the state of Ohio. What we are trying to do is, we want to go back to the norm reference tests pre-2010, talking the Iowa tests, those types of tests, and get rid of some of the teaching-to-the-test that criterion-based tests require to happen. It will also eliminate OPEZ and OTES. It will stop some of the data collection that can be sold and used by other entities. So we're working on it. It's been introduced to the House Education Committee. It will continue to, by backmapping, we will have standards in the state of Ohio, and so we will continue to get our federal funding, which is a key for this, because that was one of the instructions that we were told, have standards, and also retain our federal funding, which is 80% of Ohio's education budget. So I'm working on that right now, and in the meantime, like I said, the two big issues are generally the charter schools and accountability and that type of thing, and also the mandates. They always want to send you mandates. I think I saw one come across my desk, which was mandatory cursive. So I don't know where you guys stand on that, but I kind of like it. But again, I'm not for the mandate, but again, a lot of kids get out there, and they go, you can't read it. It's not so much writing, if they read it, you know. So anyway, that's kind of a report about what's going on, and one other thing, I will bring this up. You know how we have public schools, chartered, non-public, and chartered, and the home schools? Well, they want to have another category, and that's the independent private schools. So we're talking like Cincinnati Hills Christian Academy, Cincinnati Country Day, Summit Country Day, Mars Hill. Apparently, there's about 112 of these types of schools. One's a place in Cleveland where you bring your horse, and you board your horse when you go to school there. They want to be in their own separate category, so they're pushing real hard for this. Typically, the public schools have not, I've not heard any problem from them. I have heard some problems with the chartered non-public, concerns about it. I think the biggest problem you're going to find, I think it's going to pass eventually here in this session, but what'll be some problem when you get back into the athletics a little bit. Now, a lot of these schools would be in a lower division, because you just don't have a lot of kids. Typically, they're not just kids with 7,000 kids in a school, they're individual schools. But in some of the lower grade levels, I think some folks may complain that they're, you know, maybe recruiting or something for help their athletics, but that'd be in the districts way below where Forest Hills schools are in. So that's one issue that is out there and kind of percolating along. But a good example would be like Summit, has doctors come in for P&amp;G or Children's, and their kids are from China, and the three kids are enrolled there, what, like $20,000 a pop? They want to play soccer, but they really just, they're just tiered temporarily, and Ohio State high school athletic rules prohibit that, but under their new matrix, they'd be able to play. Now, would they be able to play just Seven Hills School and Cincinnati Christian Hills Academy, or would they then also be able to play, like, maybe a smaller school, I'll say New Richmond, or Lakeland, or something like that? Would that mess up rankings? And oh, I just don't want to get into that. So I just wanted to know there's an issue outside of the pop.
Is that strictly an athletic issue, or is that having to do with funding or anything else?
It would be another issue, but they don't typically get any funding. They might get, they would get, so that would probably not really affect it. I mean, these guys are, they're not playing in that game of getting the funding. And if there was funding, it would only go to the, again, Ohioans, it wouldn't go to the Free Charlotte students necessarily.
So as long as you know, right now, it's athletic?
Right, athletic-based and those types of things, but they're trying to break away from some of the rules that the charter non-public have, and so far.
Of course, it's also important to remember that all those schools, I'm not talking about athletics now, I'm talking about funding, get some public money.
Right, right.
When the non-public private schools do get taxpayer money, I think a lot of people are not aware of that, and it's something we need to provide.
But they're putting a hard push on, so I don't think any of them take the vouchers, though, so that's probably maybe one of the roughs. But just so you know, it'd be another category. And like I said, I think it's getting a lot of, I guess all those people want to board their horses that, what I'm saying, maybe that's where it is. But there are some unique schools up in the Cleveland area and things like that, but those are the five around here, I think, that you maybe you've heard of.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Representative Brinkman?
You said you didn't think House Bill 220 was going to go, why not?
Well, it's done a practical nature. Every co-sponsor on there is a Democrat, and the House is run by Republicans, and so is the Senate, and so is the governor. So from a practical standpoint, I don't see it going anywhere. However, I think there is a renewed interest in more scrutiny, and there will be some mechanism to do it, I just don't think that bill will be the vehicle.
Do you agree that anyone that gets public funds ought to be subject to audit by the auditor?
Absolutely. I'm for 100% transparency.
Isn't that essentially what House Bill 220 does?
I haven't read the details, but I don't know if that's okay. I just don't know. I just haven't read it, because, but I do know that there's those things popping around. I don't read every bill, because I see some that just are, like the cursive bill, I didn't read every word of it, I just kind of know what's going on with it. But yeah, I think we should have total transparency, and if you get state money, you open yourself up to audit, just like Guardian Angels Grade School. They should be able to be audited on that trail of money from the taxpayers, 100%.
Randy, do you know, I mean, is there more in HB 220 beyond if you get public funds are subject to audits?
It's a very short bill, it's a couple paragraphs. It might be one paragraph, it's pretty specific. And so again, I would hope that conservative Republicans would be able to support something like that, but.
That's why I wondered, I don't know what else is in it, but if it's one or two paragraphs, I would hate to see something like that not pass, because it's sponsored by the wrong party.
Well, welcome to politics. Welcome to politics, you know.
Actually, it's one paragraph.
Yeah, so, you know, I, you know, I'm getting it from all sides, you know, we got FC Cincinnati wanting more money, they want folks to see those open records with the county commissioners. I think that those meetings should be open. I mean, I'm all for open transparency, but I just don't know if that specific one's going to be, way of going about it is going to happen.
Realizing the reality of politics, as you just pointed out, is this a bill you could craft in a way, because of all people, I would think that you're all about transparency?
Well, a good example is Senator Seitz, or now Representative Seitz is Republican. He's the one that has come out with the bill to require ECOG to put up $6 million while their case is pending. You know, that's something that came from the Republican side. Right now, they could just take their marbles and go away, they could not pay anything. I'm getting letters from the left in this case complaining about that, but the reality is, we're actually getting something, and we might get something back that way if we continue to allow our auditing and the process to work. So there's many different ways to skin a cat, and I think that's what we're trying to do. As far as the, you know, I can look a little bit more over the summer about some of this, how the auditor and other people are delving into the charter schools, but I'm also wanting to be honest and practical, too. It's, instead of telling you, you know, hey, oh yeah, it's a great bill, it's all for, I just want to be practical, too.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming, it's always good to see you. Do you have any questions on us?
I only hear good things and keep up the ratings, but I just would want to close with this, is if every school district was like Forest Hills, we wouldn't have any problems. But Ohio's a diverse state, and we have, you know, 612 school districts. So how many we have, Randy? You keep the number.
13.
613, okay, they added one. And they're not all the same, and even school districts within 20 miles of here are both inner-city and very rural, are struggling. And so we have to craft some one-size-fits-all solutions and rules, and those are, that's a struggle. And so we appreciate, just like you struggle and balance different communities and neighborhoods, if you have meant multiple schools, we have to do the same thing. So appreciate understanding when these issues come up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great summer.
I'd also like to point out that hopefully next month, we tentatively have our new state senator, Steve Wilson, is tentatively scheduled to be with us, and with any luck, the following month, we will have our state Board of Education representative, Pat Bronze, hopefully will be with us also to give a little update. But appreciate your time this evening, and look forward to having you back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck this week.
Thank you.
All right, we are on item six, which is public commentary. We have one form from Mr. Michael McIntyre. Mr. McIntyre?
Hi.
You can keep the podium, and you have five minutes.
I'm Michael McIntyre with McIntyre Glutz Photography, and we've been photographing students in this area and at Turpin High School for nearly 15 years. We were recently dismissed as a photographer for sports and seniors at Turpin High School and sports at Nagel Middle School. They have decided to end our partnership and use Lifetouch, a national company, instead of a local provider. Speaking with David Spencer, the principal of Turpin High School, he said they did not do a comparison, but they made a change regardless of missing information, and they didn't make a strong comparison. We've been unsuccessful in our attempts to be heard. It seems to me that Forest Hills School District should, as other school districts do, provide an open competitive public bid process that would allow a better matching of school and parents' needs to vendors of choice. We recently went through this process with Coles Clermont High School, and won the bid hands-down over Lifetouch. We won further bids in the same timeframe over Lifetouch with customers who had had, who'd been Lifetouch customers for more than 15 years, due to our customer service, our personal relationships, and our listening to their needs and the desires that they had for their schools. Forest Hills School District's bylaws outline the process in section 6320 and 6320(c)(1). These are service contracts through the district, even though the district does not pay, the district itself doesn't pay for these services. The total revenue would exceed the threshold specified. As far as we can determine, this process has not been followed. That's a suggestion. Forest Hills Schools should publish an RFP for the next school year for viable school photography companies to bid and propose their services for the district. This approach would allow enough time to make the best selection based on an RFP requirements. Our latest ROI of a single school working with us was well over $6,000 of a three-year agreement, based on yearbook sales, rebates, and grants provided by our company, which is a competitive practice in the industry. Finally, we are a local company with vested interests in doing business in and with our community, and can supply service at an excellent level, not to mention, supporting local businesses is something that a school board should do over a national company. I've just had to lay off an employee because of these actions, so I took a full-time, so a full-time job, left our community, because we weren't consulted. Maybe we wouldn't have won the process, but the process was not in place for us to provide feedback and give information, and even give us the opportunity to provide these services. And I think the school board should open this up, just like any other construction project. All the construction project updates I've seen, there are competitive bids, and there's, you know, requirements that companies need to follow, and I don't know why school photography is a different case. I can't think of how it is any different than that, and it is only fair to let the community know what's going on and open it up, and make it a fair process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I shared with the public that you were speaking, and he said that he will reach out to you sometime in the next minute or so.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Item seven is district updates from the superintendent, and I believe we are getting a human resources report from Mrs. Carnegie. report from Mrs. Carnegie.
Thank you to the board for hearing a little bit about human resources tonight. I just want to give you an update. So, are you controlling? Thank you. So, yep. So, these are what we would call the primary responsibilities of HR. We're gonna talk a little bit tonight about our AP Leadership Academy, collective bargaining, employee relations, evaluations, inter-district transfers, our LPDC, resident educator, and some staffing information. So, the next slide, please. Our Assistant Principal Leadership Academy. We had our first, our inaugural Leadership Academy this year with our APs. All 15 of them actively participated and I wanted to let you know that this was a collaboration between the district who, under Scott's leadership and under the leadership of our various departments, actually created the course of which the direction of which this AP Leadership Academy would go. And then, we had facilitators from the outside, from the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators and the SAIL organization, which is Standards-Aligned Instructional Leadership. And you can see our picture here of our graduates. We have one who is missing this picture, but last week during our retreat, we celebrated our graduates by giving them a nice little certificate. So, have a little fun with that. Next slide. And these are just some of the comments that our APs made. Just give you just a moment to look at those. And I will say that pretty much every AP made some kind of a very positive comment about the difference that this academy made to them as a leader. And as a result, in the strategic vision, if you look at that, the AP Leadership Academy was in there the first year. And next year, we're actually going to take this model and we're going to expand it to our district leadership team administratively. So, exactly the same model, but very similar, and so, we're really excited about that opportunity. Collective bargaining. We spent quite a bit of time this spring in collective bargaining with our FHTA, of which I know we have at least our president here, our OPEC 177 group, and then our OPEC 273. OPEC 177 represents all of our support staff with the exception of our paraprofessionals and 273 represents our paraprofessionals. So, I think when we came out of the bargaining sessions, and as the board knows, last month, you were asked to approve three contracts for three years. I think that we came out of a process that was very respectful. I think it valued our employees, showed them how much you as a board and how much we as a team and how much our community values what our employees do to make this district and exemplar district. And so, the good part of that is during those negotiations, we were also able to maintain the current levy cycle that we had put into place several years ago. So, employee relations, one of the things we do in the HR department and then also with in collaboration, like so with the paraprofessionals, in collaboration with Betsy, with our 177 support group. It's in collaboration with Mike and Ray. We meet regularly and then, of course, with FHTA, that's kind of a group of us. But we meet regularly and we try to proactively solve any problems that are, you know, on the horizon so that we can get to them while they're small and hopefully avoid issues that become big and come to your level. And then, the other thing I wanted to make sure that you knew and a release did go out from our Communications Department today. Forest Hills was named as a Cincinnati-area top workplace for 2017 and that was a top 15. Is that right, Erica? Top 15. So, I think that that's really something that we can be proud of. So, next slide. I've heard Mr. Brinkman talk about the, you know, with a bill that the possibility of OTES and OPEZ could go away, but I just want to share with you, this is our summary of information for our teachers, our counselors from the 2016-17 school year. So, this is fresh data. If you look at OPEZ, and this is for the Ohio Principal Evaluation System, 87.5% of our principals were considered accomplished, 12.5 were considered skilled and no one in any lower rating. For the teachers, accomplished is 93.4%, skilled 6.1%. And you'll notice that there's a little orange there that says not complete. Well, actually, it's not orange. I don't know what color that is. It's a really small little piece of the pie that says not complete and it's .5%. And that's not because our people didn't do their job and didn't get the evaluations completed, but there is a caveat in for the teachers that if they're going to retire that year and they let us know in a specific, by a specific timeline, they can be opted out of OTES. Or if a teacher is out of, you know, doesn't work for part of the year, more than half of the year due to illness, they would also be opted out. So, that's why you see a .5 not complete. OSES is new. This is for our school counselors and you can see that 66.7% of our counselors are considered accomplished, 33.3 are at skilled. And then, for the final, just when you look at everybody all together, that final right-hand, bottom right-hand is everyone, 92.3% accomplished, 7.3% skilled, and .4% not complete. So, again, we're, this really talks about the hard work of our teachers, our principals, our counselors, and so forth, so we're very pleased with those numbers. Inter-district transfers. You may recall a few years ago, it was very normal for us to have 75, 80, 100 inter-district transfers. With, you know, the board's direction, we actually made some changes in inter-district transfers. And currently, for the 17-18 year, we're looking at 39 requests in the high school. 30 of those were approved, eight were denied, and it's all due to capacity. And there's one that's pending. We're doing some work on that one, taking a look at some information. And when I said 75 to 100, that was high school alone. That wasn't the two together. Elementary requests are always sort of in this 30 to 40 range. And so, for this year, we have 35, 30 approved. You can see two denied, also due to capacity, and then three that are pending right now. LPDC. Our LPDC committee is composed of three teachers from the Forest Hills Teachers Association and two administrators. And it's the job of the LPDC to take a look at the license of each teacher and principal and make sure that they meet the requirements to renew their license on a five-year basis, every five-year basis. And so, you can see the numbers there for during 16-17, the number that we actually went through and approved requests for license renewals. Now, I would also say, we're also approving a number of other items. We approve high-quality professional development for our early childhood teachers. We approve individual professional development plans for individual people. So, we do a lot more, but that's a number that we're actually completed and we're given renewal opportunities this year. Resident educator. The resident educator program, and I know you've heard a bit about this in the past, it's a four-year program, much like a doctor who comes out of college, goes into a residency. The resident educator teacher goes into a four-year residency and during that time, initially, they're very, very directed by a mentor and our coordinator and, you know, there's lots of what I would call just a lot of direction and guidance. And then, as they go through, you know, first year, second year, third year, fourth year, they begin to move into leadership opportunities and the program, the direction of the program changes a bit. If they complete all four years successfully, then they are eligible for their professional license. In the 16-17 school year, you can see the number of REs that we had. Year four, of course, was the biggest and that was 24 resident educators that were in the program this year. Some of you may remember, in the fall, we brought in three teachers who were invited to the State House. They were recognized by, I don't know if the governor was there, but some of the legislators who were there and they were actually in the top 100 scores in each of the past three years. So, again, congratulations to those teachers. 100% of those 24 people we just talked about who are year four resident educators have completed all the requirements and they're now eligible for their professional license. And I also want to make sure that I give a shout out because the program wouldn't work as well if we didn't have very high-quality entry-year teachers coming in, if we didn't have high-quality mentors. And Julie Thorpe, who coordinates the program for us, is a teacher and does a great job. One of the things that wasn't discussed is as a part of the budget, it looks as if this resident educator program is being eliminated. There is no money in the budget for it and interestingly enough, most of the program is not funded by the state anyway. They're what we call unfunded mandates. However, year three, which is the rest of the year, is an assessment and that is funded by the state. And that is a part of, you know, that's where the money has been put in and now the state is pulling that back out. And so, one of the things that we feel really strongly though is that this resident educator, having a mentor, is extremely important to entry-year teachers. So, regardless of the funding, whether it's in the budget or not in the budget, we would like to continue some form of a resident educator program with mentoring. We're still working through that with the Curriculum Department, but we do hope to provide something for our resident educators. All right, staffing. From July 1st, 2016 through present day, we have hired and onboarded the following number of teachers. Where it says all-day kindergarten right there, there should be a seven at the end of that. Somehow, I missed that number. And those are for 17-18, but they're, you know, seven kindergarten teachers, teachers in general, 30, paraprofessionals 10. So, total in a year's period, now, think, keep in mind, some of those were for 16-17 and then some of these are for 17-18. But in a year's period, we are onboarding about 76, 80 or so teachers a year and other support staff. And what, a number that's not up here would be coaches. So, coaches who are not already employees in some way, shape, or form, we're also onboarding about 50 to 75 coaches a year. So, it's a lot, it's a lot of folks. Still to be hired. So, we are getting very, we're getting much closer than we have been in terms of getting our full complement of teachers and staff, but we still do have a few positions out and you can see what we anticipate we'll be bringing to you between the July and August meeting. And we do have new teacher orientation three days this year. We're excited about bringing those folks in. The FTE changes kindergarten. I want to bring to your attention that right now, in our projections, we have 11 teachers as we transition from half-day kindergarten to all-day kindergarten, keeping in mind that there also is that opportunity for half-day for those people who choose. So, we have half-day and full-day opportunities. Right now, we're at 10.5 teachers. However, students continue to register and so forth, so there could be some adjustment there. And then, we also have three intervention aides in our projections that we may not need to hire. Our thoughts were if we had a little bit larger kindergarten class, maybe 24 students, our target number is 19, but if we had a little bit bigger class of maybe 24, maybe instead of dividing those into 212 classes, we would have an intervention aide who would assist. So, we'd have a teacher and an intervention aide. So, we have three people in our projections. We're still just, we haven't hired any of those. We're still just trying to determine what's the best course of action to take. Other teachers, right now, we're looking at 5.84. And then, you know, I have a little bit of an explanation here. Certainly, early on, Scott said, you know, we talked about and we're trying not to have any additional staff, but you know, sometimes that just doesn't work out. Things happen and so, there are some things that happened that were outside of our control. There were some compliance issues in preschool that we learned about. We have a special education situation at Alter Crest where we had to have some additional staffing. AR, third grade, who would have, you know, dreamed? AR is a very stable building that once they get their number of students, it tends to, that grade level tends to stay. We reduced a teacher there and don't you know, three or four more kids moved in. And so, we ended up, you know, putting that teacher back in because it's the right thing to do. If you remember Nagel Middle School, we had talked about taking some music staffing out. We took part of a music teacher out, but instead, you know, then we added back some .5 music teacher after we received feedback. You listened and made a decision to put some music offerings back in. Increased enrollment at the high school, additional course offerings, and we ended up, the majority of those, that number is really in our high school, those additions. So, we think they'll be short-term because we do have smaller numbers coming through the system. It's just for the next two or three years, we're gonna have these large numbers going through. Administrator, it's a plus-one add, but really, we just converted two of our assistant athletic directors from support positions into administrator positions and then reduced to one lead custodian. So, it ends up being a positive one. And then, support staff, right now, we're looking at a negative 2.13 and we had some reductions in administrative assistants in paraprofessional and then, again, the ADs because they were support staff and they're administration, while we also have some increases in custodial and those intervention aides I talked about earlier for kindergarten. So, right now, the number is 15.71 and that looks big, but I want you to remind you that 11 plus 3, 14 of that is also a part of the kindergarten. And so, that transition to kindergarten, so we continue to work. Yes?
Can I add that those are actually funded with tuition dollars?
Thank you.
I think there's a big number there. It's a choice that parents make to do for funding. It's all people.
And then, the last slide. Just a few little things, just these are some of the other things that our office is responsible to maintain. Twitter, I, we tend to do a lot of job posting on Twitter and we had 1,367 when I did this last night and today I have 1,369. So, we'll continue. Got two more, but I think a couple people left too, but we've got a couple more. So, and then, most of you probably know, but Ellen Chamberlain is retiring at the end of this month and so, in the last month and a half, we have been onboarding Angela Johnson, who will be taking her place. And, you know, certainly, we wish Ellen the best and also, we're very excited that Angela's able to take on this position. She's excited about the role as well. So, that's HR, Anna, and a little bit of my nutshell.
Thank you, Kami. That was very helpful. Are there any questions? Randy?
OTES and OPEZ numbers looks great. How does that compare to our competitors?
I think that I would, I can do some research and give you specific information.
General, just your...
But generally speaking, I'd say we are right with our competitors and part of the reason is we have a value-added score that is as high as you can get and that value-added score always pushes our, so whatever level you're at, it always pushes people at, you know, at least one level up. And so, I think that we're very competitive with our peers, but I can, I'll do a little research and check.
The second thing, the resident educator, the year-three program. I don't, you know, is the program mandated or, I want to make, it sounds like it's a good thing, so I want to make sure that we figure out a way to continue that and maybe put some pressure. I know Tom said we go fix some things that we made a mistake on, maybe this is a mistake that could get fixed.
So, I would say that the program is very good. There, it's not perfect. It is not perfect, but there are components of this program that are excellent and that's what we've talked about, even if the state says to us, you know, well, we're not gonna fund this, we still want to find a way to provide support and mentorship for our entry-level teachers. Year three really is the expensive part of this. When we hire mentors for our entry-level teachers in year one and year two, Forest Hills is putting the bill for that. There's no state money.
And as we call it, we pay the mentors. How many mentors are there approximately?
It really just depends on that year. You know, it can be, it can be 15, 10, 15, 20, just if we're on a, if we're on a cycle where we're hiring a lot of people who are, have zero and one years of experience, obviously, there'll be more. Right now, we're kind of in the middle. We hire some that are there and some that are, have more experience.
Is the program primarily done, my question is, what about this program? Is it primarily done during the day or is there after-school programming?
Both.
Okay.
The mentors do a lot of the work during the day. If they can find a common planning period and so forth, they'll work together. A lot of it also occurs before or after school as well. Anytime we have district-level meetings, when we bring all of our resident educators in at one time, that, of course, will be after school. You know, we move everybody in. And our year one resident educators have significantly more meetings than anyone else. You know, each year, it lessens a little bit and so, you know, I would say it's a good balance. Probably, most things are happening within the school day, but there are also things after.
And if there's professional licensure given at the end of the successful completion, what is going to take the pulse of that so that a young teacher can really be professionally licensed?
What... What, what the last piece of legislation that we saw said that no teacher will be required to go through any portion of the resident educator program in order to get their license, but it does not address how they will get their license. So we don't know if it's just teach four years and then you can move into the professional license. We, that hasn't been addressed yet.
One other question, the turn, I think you said we heard, seventy-six new people. I think that puts us somewhere under ten percent. Is that an acceptable turn rate?
This, this particular, last year, we had a lot of turnover due to the changes in S T R S. The last two years, there have been significant changes due to S T R S changes. This year, S E R S. Betsy, we are fifteen paraprofessionals.
Okay.
As well as Ellen Chamberlain retired because of the changes in S E R S. You know, those pieces are really impacting people making decisions. Many, many of our folks will say, I'm not really ready to go, but it, it's a, it's a poor financial decision if I don't go now.
That's totally understandable. But I just wanted to make sure, if we were losing people at higher than acceptable rates, what was the reason for, can I get it for these two? So that, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very, and, one minute.
We also...
Oh, I forgot about that. How could I? All right, so it's not on the agenda, is it? But, um...
It's just part of the superintendent updates.
Okay.
You didn't miss anything, Julie?
Yes, Julie, you...
No, you didn't do any...
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so now we have Mrs. Adams to talk about the gifted program.
What I wanted to let you guys know about is about three years ago, we came together with, we had gifted teachers and some administrators to review our gifted services model. And what we learned at that time is that we really are doing well. We had a Hamilton County consultant come in, talk to us. We looked at our results, compared it to the schools that we often compare ourselves to, and we were pretty pleased with that. But the one concern that was really kind of nudging at us is the fact that we identify a lot of students based on the criteria from, that's set in Forest Hills, but we don't serve as many. We're required by the state to identify, but you don't have to serve. And we were concerned about that discrepancy. At about that same time, the state of Ohio started to change how they score and report on gifted outcomes. There's three different pieces now that they look at. One is the value-added score. Another is the performance index, which is the high level of achievement at the, at the top categories for, for the testing. And the third is the inputs. And inputs is where you, it measures, how many do you identify versus how many you serve? And so, in Forest Hills over the last several years, we've gotten a red in that category, as in not meeting it. And so, it's kind of set up unfair for districts like us. It's almost impossible to achieve a perfect input score if you're Forest Hills. But yet, we still wanted to reflect and consider, how might we continue to expand services and better meet the needs of gifted students? So what we were able to accomplish is to begin, school by school, grade level by grade level, an opportunity to build capacity in teachers. Ohio changed their, their rulings so that you could get, not certification, but credentials to serve gifted students, even though you were a regular teacher, teaching in a regular classroom. And so, little by little, we've been expanding. However, the, the state, the state operating standards have recently changed, and it's causing us to need to really accelerate our work in that area to continue to keep, keep up and meet those demands. And so, what, what we've been doing with our teachers, just to give you a little picture, is to really help teachers understand the social-emotional needs of a gifted student as well as the academic needs. Because those needs are very unique, and we wanted to make sure that teachers at all levels are able to address those needs. Because in the past, a gifted service would happen a small portion of the school day, but we wanted to, over time, be able to really expand the time of school, in a school day where a gifted student is served more effectively. So, at this point, we've, we've made a lot of gains and we need to make another, another change. And that's what I wanted to let you know about tonight. We are also going to change our, our previous cut score from the ninety-seventh percentile. We're going to move it back to ninety-fifth percentile. That's the state number. And then, we think we're going to be able to serve more students that way. And so, in addition to making that change, we're going to continue to build capacity in our staff and, over time, be able to make some, some true gains in the areas of gifted. Because it is our vision that, long-term, we serve students better through a more personalized approach in education and that we are, are really all teachers' ability to take care of this. And so, we are going to be, over the course of the next year, build, bringing in parents and other various stakeholders, as well as teachers and administrators, to continue to review our program and to make recommendations for the future. As, in the background, we keep working through professional development, the best way to, to develop teachers, get them confident and comfortable in, in serving the needs of gifted teachers. So we wanted to just make you aware of those changes, because we'll be sending out some letters to parents and students, letting them know that they're in the program and exactly what the services will look like for next year. So, any questions?
Thank you. So ninety-fifth is the state requirement?
Yes, and that's the number for the state.
So for this upcoming school year?
We're going to change it. Yes, and that would just apply to those, the incoming fourth graders, and that will be the new number from now on. We won't change it for all the other grades that are already...
It's just a yes, it's going to be for everyone?
No, it would, it'll just be for that, those, those rising third to fourth graders, and then it'll, it'll be the new number.
And parents are getting those letters right now, and that's why...
They will be in the...
Shortly.
Shortly, yeah. Before this month is over.
At ninety-seven percent, and just a round number, do you know approximately what percent of our students qualified for yellow or whatever the special...
Well, typically, we identify about two thousand sixty-some students. And we had been serving about three hundred or so. This year, we were able to expand that number quite a bit. I, I don't know the precise number for next year, because we've just been playing with them as we looked at the new cut score opportunities. But that gives you an idea of the discrepancy when you hear that number.
So, I'll go ahead, Joe.
You really got to be careful when you start looking at those numbers. Two thousand, I don't know, you know, what, twenty-eight, thirty percent of our student population. I mean, what you're defining is, is gifted. I'm not suggesting that all gifted children are special, but you can't possibly identify a third of your student body and then serve, provide services to all of them. What this does is it, by lowering the cut score, it's going to allow us to serve more kids, and that's the point. But we're never going to get to serving a third of the student body.
With a particular gifted intervention specialist. We are looking to find other creative ways to, to do it, but not with a G I S.
So the, the pullout that was sort of the old way to do it, where your children got pulled out of class, that may still happen.
It will, it will. It'll be, yes, it is.
And empowering more people or more teachers in their regular classrooms to serve identified gifted students?
Yes. And there are multi-tier systems of support, where we screen all students, we look at their achievement, we group them according to what their particular needs are, and intensively target their needs and monitor the progress. We're doing that with all kids. And so, we're just hitting the, that most high-achieving student as well as the neediest, most at-risk student at the same time.
The only, I don't even think it's a negative. The only, I, I think I expressed this to you when we talked, it just seems like it's more responsibilities put on the teachers in the classroom. And, and they, they, you know, I'm sure that they have, you know, they, they teach different children different ways based on who they get, but, yeah, so...
Yeah, and I agree with you. Certainly, it, it is an additional responsibility, additional skills being needed. But the, the one thing that I expressed is this concept of professional learning communities. We, we are really trying to work in Forest Hills that we're not in isolation, where everyone just goes in the room and shuts the door. We work as a team and we serve as a team, so that it's divide and conquer, meeting the kids where they are and, and not kind of doing a one-size-fits-all. And so, the power of the team is really how you get that done. It's really one by one, it would hardly, it'd be impossible. But we're working together, better than ever, and I, and we believe we can achieve that.
In addition to that, Forrest authorized utilizing target numbers in classrooms. And again, these are target numbers, that doesn't always happen that way, but we make attempts to be, to lower our green portion of our chart, which means that there are typically less students in classrooms than we may have experienced in the past year. That also helps be part of the equation, the number of class, the number of students to teacher ratio.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, more discussions. Is there anything we want to talk about? But, uh...
I've got one quick thing, and maybe we can defer it to Forrest since he's, is the president. But with Tony gone, we have a vacancy in the committees he was serving on, and it would be my proposal for either our president or our vice president to, to fill the position that Tony filled on curriculum.
And she was on that committee before. She was...
She was. She was on the committee, so...
I think Forrest probably should, should appoint, but I will let him know that we all think that's a good idea, right?
Let me also add, that Tony was also a member of the finance committee.
I would. I would.
I was an English teacher.
That's okay. That's okay.
You'll learn something new.
Exactly. Okay.
Not painful, but if you would mind, I'd be glad to have you make that appointment.
I'll, I'll reach out. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, business separations. Mr. Johnson?
I was fully planning on turning things over to date with facility update, but in terms of construction, you run into new things every single day. Part of this is, I wanted to show you that this evening is what we discovered at Anderson High School today. As you know, we have a lot of asphalt work going on in, on the project there. We're in the process of building a retention pond that if you're sitting in Brown Stadium is to your immediate right into head of the track just outside the fence. We discovered last week that we had some interesting fill back in that area. Today, we discovered the depth of it. What you're seeing here, Susan, if you want to just kind of scroll through some of these, this is, what you see here is asphalt, concrete, keep going. We've got concrete pipe down here. We've got a, go ahead. We've got a set of concrete steps that are back here. We had found concrete piping, light holes, sheet metal back here. So we spent most of the day out here on this today. This is going to be a significant issue we're going to have to address. While we were out there, we had one of the subcontractors dug a hole that was probably ten-foot long and ten feet deep as well. And it took us getting down to about the eight-foot level where we were at before we got below this. So, all this is going to have to be removed. If you want to go back maybe to one of the earlier pictures here, just, what I want to do is just kind of give you the scope. Can you back up maybe? Okay, right here. Back up here at the top, you see the structure at the top. The top of this, down all the way to the bottom, there's a creek, is about thirty feet. And what we have to do is, we have, the detention pond is up at the top. The piping releases the water, and the control base is into the pond or into the creek that runs down and comes into Forest Road that they had the old five mile. But what we have to do is we have to rebuild this hillside to be able to support the detention pond that's at the top of this. And to try and do so without delaying any of the asphalt work that's going on here, as well as everything else going on in the campus. And this was discovered about ten o'clock this morning. So I just wanted to, this isn't in Dave's report, I shared the information with Scott Rick and Mike shortly after leaving the site, and just wanted to kind of get you up on, on board on that. I, we haven't even begun to determine the scope of magnitude of the work here, so...
So Ray, one of the questions that came out of this morning meeting, I think, is an obvious one, is one we discussed a little bit this morning, but how, how did we get to this point in the project without having some of this information if we had companies coming out to review this property prior to building?
We, we had test borings done at, at multiple places here. What we had, what we discovered here is, we believe this is from prior construction on the Anderson campus. Maybe when the school that was in, on the old Crower site was there, torn down. But this, this was done with intent here because this was buried. It was, there was earth bulldozed over top of this. So you wouldn't have to go to the depths of three and four feet with your borings. Where the track storage shed was at Anderson, we had reason to suspect that had been a fill area. So by design, that building's built on piers to accommodate that. We had, we had, nobody had any idea that there was anything back here in this area. So, we're working, we've got a meeting scheduled at nine tomorrow morning with the entire team, who were all brought up to date on this throughout the day today.
Yeah, this is another, this is going to be another significant change order, it seems. And I know that many moons ago, when we talked about the different reasons you could, you could, attribute to change orders, you know, there are different ones, architect, owner, code, whatever. It would be, I think what Scott's getting at is, is there something, it's brand new, I get it, it's ten AM in the morning, you've got it. But it would be good to know if there is some responsibility here because it's going to be expensive. Do you ever build a house? Builders love to just trash, put the trash in your property and cover it up. It's less expensive than for them to put it in big trucks and...
Julie, this is probably forty years old.
Well...
And probably by somebody...
It's the issue, right?
Probably somebody under contract to the school district that, that buried it back there. And the school district, I'm guessing, somebody in the school district had to have some knowledge. This, this is so massive, somebody didn't do this in the dark of the night.
Well, so, you know, had we done the test borings, it wouldn't have eliminated the profit and it only made us aware of it. We still would have had to deal with it at whatever cost. We'd have just known about it earlier. I would, I know it's maybe forty years old, but that doesn't mean that if whoever is responsible for it is still around, and it's better likelihood it is that they're not, that there is still some culpability if in fact they're burying and hiding forty-year-old intentional misconduct.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't even know where we're getting at.
So, like I said, right now, we're just trying to, to come up with a solution to try and keep things, you know, in a proper timeframe as far as completing things.
Did you say somebody did test and just, they didn't...
Well, you would have had to, well, you would have, the area where the detention pond itself was, was tested, but you would have had to test the whole, the whole hillside there. And this, some of this is buried in the grave depths. Like I said, we had dug a ten-foot hole at the foot of this and went down through several feet of porous soil, then hit this, and then went down to a level of about eight to ten feet before we got all the way through it.
So it wasn't visible?
No. Oh, no, no. None of it was visible. I mean, this was a heavily wooded area, what, two and a half weeks ago?
Well, keep us informed. Maybe you could share some good news now.
Yeah.
Well, anytime you find things in the dirt, you, it's sometimes very much a surprise. This much material, somebody decided this was the least expensive way to, to remove this material from a site. It was not done maliciously or hiddenly. Owners are often faced with, what do you want me to do with this stuff? And owners will oftentimes say, hey, I'm never going to use that area over there, let's bury it there. And then, forty years later, I need to use that area there, so now it needs to be removed. And you're faced with those decisions right now. Do we remove this completely from the site? Or do we put it someplace else on-site that then just defers maybe the eventual removal anyway? So it...
Yeah, that was one of the questions that actually came up late this afternoon on it. And of course, we're looking at it now, the victim is the same, but we wouldn't do that to somebody in the future.
So Forrest's father knew about it.
I think it would be important time, I think it was important time even.
There, there's very few things in a project that are unforeseen, and you know I don't often categorize them as unforeseen, especially in a building where you can go kick the tires. But this is truly an unforeseen because there was very limited area that anything was exposed. And to assume that this was six to eight feet deep and covering as much space as it is would have been a, a pretty broad guess. And it, it was very highly possible that if a boring was done, it was done where this stuff wasn't. Because we have put in a substantial amount of the detention area pipe work, and I've not seen any of this stuff until they started to scrape the ground just adjacent to the pipe work. The pipe work was installed where a natural drainage erosion had occurred. And so, it, you know, was hard to decide, hey, in the middle of this, fifty feet, seventy feet wide is eight feet deep worth of, and it's an unusual pile of material. I think the only thing we didn't find was Elvis. Otherwise, it's, it's there, so... All right, so, so the good news is progress in a, in a large way. All right, so the good news is progress in a large way. This, and you know, although this says June, it's early June because now all the windows here have been removed and probably tomorrow, if not the next day, the masonry wall will begin. And so this is kind of an unusual project that requires a little explanation because people drive by and go, there's only one wall, what's going on? There's a substantial amount of work that's occurring right here and inside, and in my report, you'll see metal studs and work going on. But this is a firewall, so there's a substantial amount of preparatory work that's going on to build that wall, which is now done. And now block will begin right here, and that's why there's a big scaffolding works there. And then that block work will finish, and then the rest of the walls, and then the roof. So it'll go pretty quickly, pretty shortly. And this is the scaffold works, and behind there is some serious work going on. But even all these windows are now removed. And we had to kind of wait to get kids out before we could remove the windows, otherwise we would have put them in a plywood wall of windows. It wouldn't have been very nice, even if it was only for a couple of weeks. So this is inside, and even, these are older pictures by a week. It's amazing how much, and I will tell you, all of our sites, we've got right now about 375 men and women working, so there's a lot of folks putting a lot of effort in. But this has got all the plumbing and the electric and the heating work done inside here in preparation for drywall, basically, once it gets dried in. Back, again, this is an earlier picture, I think, these were a couple of weeks ago. So these are much taller now, but this is the footprint of the multipurpose building. And inside, and again, you look at these and you go, really, we're going to start school in September? I mean, really? This is demo work, and in two weeks, they pretty much demoed everything out of the facility that needed demoed out. And now they're in the process of block walls, cut the floors for new plumbing work and metal stud work in the yard area especially. This is more the science area. Difference between May and June, the brick work at Maddox is about complete, which is really nice. Office area is going to be a nice entryway. Right before the drywall went up in a bathroom in Atlanta. But I will tell you, in this picture, it doesn't do it justice. I think what I've got in my report shows that there's finished paint in the office area, so it's moving on pretty quickly. And this is an all-day kindergarten, which we committed, if we get nothing done, we would get the all-day kindergartens done. But we're committed to get the office area at Maddox, the all-day kindergarten spaces up and running, and pretty much the core of the building where the gym, cafeteria, the new lift is. The peripheries, one is done, and as you know, this is a phased program, runs out to February, so they will continue to pick up phases once school gets back in. This is a picture of the office area. This is a picture of the new kindergarten spaces, all-day kindergarten. Mercer, you know, in this area of Mercer, we had some floor issues that have now been mitigated, and I think in your report, I show a little bit more of that work, but it entailed shot blasting to floor, which is a process of bead blasting, like sand blasting, so that the material that's there will accept new material. Then a two-part epoxy system to seal it, and then another layer of cementaceous material, which would be the basis under which the VCT would be glued. I'll tell you that all that work is done, and VCT is being installed as we speak, so that process is complete. But this is what it looks like, this is the old music area. That's what it looks like after the shot blasting work is done, so it's quite an involved process. The connecting corridor, which you probably would never see if we didn't do this piece of work, but you know, it's pretty much gutted with the intention of new windows and a new set of steps. Gymnasium, which doesn't look like this now, it kind of started gathering material, but that also had some mitigation to do on the floor, and so that process has begun. Summit, these are the remaining rooms at Summit. We had 16 rooms that were various stages, some were finished than others, but they're, they're moving quite quickly. This is the elevator in May, just a footer, basically, and you can see behind the tree that now there's a masonry elevator shaft that's behind there. And the elevator is on site, which is good, so the installation in this masonry work will begin, if not now, early next week or the following. Turpin, this picture, it doesn't do justice to the size of the crane that was out there. If anybody drove out and saw this crane, it was like, really, this is on our job site, it's pretty cool. It took another crane to build this crane. This crane has 200 tons of counterweight on it because they need to lift that unit right there across the top of this building, so hence the height and the weight. But it's proceeding nicely. The, obviously, this part of the building is October, but this part of the building, which will be the gym entrance, will be online for start of school, which will be nice because we'll get back another entrance. And it's been tough inside here, I'm sure, trying to operate and come through one entrance. Just some various pictures. This down around the pool, it's hard to tell, but this is now a ramp that goes down and just past this guy goes around the corner and comes back down. In that building, the ramps were not ADA acceptable, they were too steep, so now there's a new ramp that gets you from one level to the other to the pool. Boiler room, those are fun for me, it's like, there's just lots of equipment, but ongoing work. So this is a science area, and this is a pretty interesting space here. This is a lower-level science area towards, towards the road. And once the demo was occurred, the space was like huge, it was only a gymnasium-sized space, but, so all the demo work is also done there, and they are progressing with the masonry walls and the stud walls and are on schedule for delivery for start of school. Wilson is also on delivery schedule. This is, if you remember, academic wing, academic wing, office area, music area, gymnasium, cafeteria area. And what's neat about between May and June is parts of the building are now missing over here. And I think the photos that I included in my report even show more. Actually, right now, this is, this is, this is gone. I don't want to point the new building. This is gone right now. And this excavation is about halfway done. And good news, back to Anderson, about 4,000 yards of dirt are coming from this site to help us rebuild that detention area, which is our dirt, so we don't have to pay for dirt nor trucking, which is a big deal. If there's additional dirt, that's a different story, but we've got a good, a good start at that repair with our own dirt. So these rooms now have VCT floor on them, so they progressed considerably since these early photos in June. And I think that's in my report, I did see one in here. Gymnasium space, early on, with pretty much no roof, roof end started dried in. In fact, that's the casework that they're storing in the space because it's dried in. And this is the media center, just kind of, you know, some of the drywall things are starting to finish up. Paint is on the walls, at least the primer coats in this area, the finish coats are in the A and C, the academic wings. I think that's it. Is that it? Yeah, okay. Playgrounds, playgrounds, yeah, I'll include some pieces of playgrounds next, next time. The playground has begun everywhere but AIR. AIR got moved a little bit to accommodate a better location. And although it's been delayed, we've got a commitment from our contractor that by start of school, all the playgrounds will be done, which is a good, a good piece of news. So there are various stages of either foundations in or just the beginning of excavation. And at AIR, we're just going to get started here shortly, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Ray. Anybody? So the next several items on the agenda, 9.2 through 9.9, so.
Okay. As you said, items 9.3 through 9.9 are change orders. I provided all the related information on this to the board members in advance. So unless there are any questions, I just, you know, go ahead and move on. 9.1, let's see, 10. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. It's the, thank you. As you may recall, back in March, we had a serious storm move through Cincinnati, and we had significant damage to the roof of the Maddox Gym. We were able to, Rick helped, was a big help that day. He helped us get a structural engineer on site, our insurance agent on site, were able to make sure that it was structurally sound, so it continued school, but it was deemed that we were going to have to replace it. So we had the bid opening to replace the Maddox Gym, and the item is 9.2. To award the contract, replace the Maddox Gym to Drew Craft Roofing as presented. We'll be signing the contract, we've already had some meetings with them, and they will be getting started right away, so we can get this work completed before the upcoming school year. 9.10 is approval of lease with BEE Properties. As we're doing the work on the Anderson campus, we wanted to find the location, we could move all of the school buses to in a secure area. So we've entered into an agreement, a two-month agreement with an option for a third with BEE. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the lease with BEE Properties Incorporated. 9.11 is approval of amended lease with Muller Knights of Columbus. I was contacted by Dick Hoxima with the Knights of Columbus, and he wanted us to revise their mailing address and proper legal name. There's no other changes in, in the document, and the document was approved and drafted by district legal counsel. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the lease with Muller Knights of Columbus. 9.12 is approval of lease with Broadwell Factory Group. What we found is we were in need of some additional storage space for some of the items that are being delivered this summer. We were looking at space for either technology equipment or all the new furniture that's coming in. So what we determined is we're going to be putting some of the new furniture, I believe is going to arrive yet this week. So the motion is to approve the lease with Broadwell Factory Group is presented, it's a two-month lease. 9.13 is an easement with Anderson High School. We have a neighbor who resides immediately south of where the transportation building used to exist. There is a wood fence on that property. The wood fence sits about 18 to 24 inches inside the neighbor's property line, which a prior resident had built a fence that way because he did not want to take responsibility for several large trees outside the fence. If we were to put our fence where it intended, we'd have that gap of 18 to 24 inches. So I've met with the neighbor, asked if he would mind if we took down the wood slat fence at our expense, we'd install the fence, so there'd be one fence on the property line. Ironically, it's going to take almost down to about the same point on Forrest Road. Easy lay, he's got no problems with us whatsoever, but we just thought, given the past history on this, it'd be nice to have some document in place to memorialize this. So worked with Ennis Britton, they put together the lease here, and we're going to be entering into it with the Bodie family on Forrest Road. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the easement as shown in the attached.
Are there any questions on 9.11 or 9.10 through 13 that had been added to the agenda? Was that there last week, on Friday? I'm just wondering, I don't remember seeing that happen.
Well, I think that originally, when I started putting items in, all my items were in the 10 series, and as the agenda got updated, they became 9, so they may have been someplace, it may have been someplace else in the agenda. There was one, the easement did not get in until Friday, because I did not get that information back from legal counsel until Thursday afternoon.
So I'm trying to figure out where I, where I missed some of this stuff. I mean, we got the email about the live agenda on, what, Thursday?
Yeah.
Should I just look at it too a little?
Yeah.
Well, usually there's a change to the agenda that's supposed to be attentioned, so I didn't put it off that early. So the agenda I put it off is as of December.
I need to look at that. All right. It looks, just looking at this stuff, I mean, it all seems simple enough, it's all short-term. The only one, 9.11, no, not 1, 9.11, 9.10, BEE Properties did legal look at that?
Legal looked at this, and I also had our liability carrier review the lease as well. They recommended a couple of minor changes, and those were made right away without question.
All right, and 9.11 is just a change of the names.
Correct. Yeah, Ryan Laflame.
9.12 is only two months, and then.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So the easement does just to remove the fence?
Well, yeah, removing the fence will also give us the ability to enter onto the property to maintain the fence. So the fence will go on the property line. The fence that runs parallel to Forrest Road on the neighbor's property is right on the property line. So we're, we'll be removing that fence as well. Like I said, we've worked out all that with him, we just both agree this might be a good way of memorializing.
And that easement, there was no money exchanged?
No.
So thank you for the level of detail in your children's.
Orders.
Yeah.
Joe, you can record that earlier as well.
Item 10.1 is the new textbook, it's a sociology book, The Study of Human Relations, has been on display in our office since the last board meeting. And the superintendent recommends that the board approve this adoption for the sociology class as shown. Item 10.2 is also new textbook adoptions. Both these books, Guide to Good Food Nutrition and Food Preparation and The Developing Child have been on display in our office since our last meeting. So the superintendent recommends that the board approve these books for family and consumer science as shown. And item 10.3 is the St. Joseph Orphanage Service Agreement for the 2017-18 school year. There are really no changes in this compared to this year's agreement. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the July 1st, 2017 service agreement between St. Joseph Orphanage and the Forest Hill School District for the 2017-2018 school year. And those services are emphasized on psychological services, physician and nursing services, therapeutic, counseling and social work, and tutoring services. Any questions?
Item 11.1, the human resources report. Item A, we have retirement. One administrator, Kevin Reed, 29 years with Forest Hills as lead custodian, most recently. Certified, Rosita Welheim, 26 years with Forest Hills, most recently a third grade teacher at Summit. And classified staff, Gail Conrad, 18 years as a bus driver, and Dennis White, five years as a bus driver as well. So we want to say congratulations to these folks and wish them the very best in their retirement. Item B, we have resignations. The first is an administrator, Lisa Courtney. Lisa has been an assistant principal with us at Anderson, I'm sorry, at AIR. And she is actually a, one of the graduates now of our AP Leadership Academy because she's going on to become a principal at Brantner Elementary at West Claremont. So we wish her the best as well. You see teaching staff resignations on the next page, non-teaching staff. Item C is just simply covering language to cover all of the other alphabet letters you see there. Item D, appointment for 2016-17. A couple of items just to clean up. Item E, these are some special services appointments from pages two through five, providing special support ser, hmm, start that one over, providing support services to our students with disabilities, some parent meetings and so forth, just informational. Page five. Item F, these would be coaches finishing up for the 16-17 school year. Item G, substitute personnel for 16-17. And then reappointment. Item H, a personnel for 17-18. We have two individuals there. A change of title, an item I, for three of our administrators. J, change of salary for Alicia Champion. Item K, change of assignment, and you do see that at the bottom of page six, and it goes on up to page seven. Item L, changing contract days. The first one's actually a negotiated item, elementary health aides from seven hours to eight per day. And then the rest of these are just changes within the food services. Item M, appointments. The first appointment I would like to talk to you about would be Jonathan Daniels. Jonathan has been selected to move into our transportation department as the assistant supervisor for a four-year, or a two-year term, beginning August 1, 2017, ending July 31, 2019. And Jonathan is in the, in the house tonight. So if you don't know Jonathan, he's been an employee with the district for a number of years, working in transportation. His wife Bobby is with him tonight, so thank you, Bobby. Bobby's also an employee for the district in the treacherous office. So we want to welcome Jonathan to the administrator family. Moving on. Moving on. Moving on for teaching staff, I only, I see one of our folks here in the, in that group of people that are out there, audience, thank you. It's been a long night already. Peter Frankis is with us and Peter's going to join us at Maddox as one of our kindergarten teachers, so we're very excited about that. Peter's had a very busy month. He's gotten married, bought a new house and got a job. So congratulations, Peter. At the bottom of page eight, you also see additional new staff going on to page nine. Bringing back Pat Tussi. Pat is invaluable to help us with the construction project and all of the work that she does to help just maintain the financials, some of the financials for that. Item N, special services appointments. Now, this is beginning 17-18 and this is from pages nine and 10. Going on to page 11, we have substitute personnel and again, we're moving, this is for 17-18. So we're on pages 11 through 13. Item P is a substitute teacher salary schedule. You may recall that we collaborate with the Hamilton County Educational Service Center to get our teacher subs, but everything, but all of their subs are hired through the district. So we do have that sub-teacher salary schedule. Item Q, subrates for operational employees. Item R, a job description for a technology specialist. Item S, an amendment to the athletic training contract we have with Ignition. Item T, an MOU with our FHTA. Item U is an OCE 177 MOU. And item V is a supplemental salary schedule. And you approved this last month, but there were a couple just very, very minor revisions and so we'd like to approve it again. Since the last board meeting, there has been a slight decrease in bus routes of .05. It means our staffing level for 16-17 is 785.14. And during my presentation, I talked to you a little bit about projections. I just want to remind everybody that the FTE report that you get every month, which is up on the board at this time, you will not see an updated one of these until October because we will be working to make all of the adjustments from the 16-17 to 17-18. So you'll, we'll certainly keep you updated, but you won't actually see this report again until October.
I'm just saying, I'm sure the rest of the board members especially Mr. Frumman share appreciation for that report. That is very, very helpful to precisely see what's going on and we haven't always had that level of specificity, so thank you.
Well, the work we're doing and the information we give in the resources committee, we kind of have a feel for what this is going to look like even before we see it. That's what an estimation or a helpful condition.
And I would say your thanks need to really go to our superintendent because this is something that he brought with him and suggested that we take a look at it. And so, you know, I would agree. In the past, you got a number, 785.14. What did that mean? You know? Now you know. It's this many teachers, this many administrators and so forth. So I think the information is much more valuable to you.
Thank you. Next we have Student Services.
Student Services has five contracts in item 12.1 to 12.5 for your approval this evening. The first, 12.1, is with Healthcare Process Consulting. This is a contract that assists us with the required documentation, cost, claim reports, consultation, training, and any necessary tracking for billing for Medicaid. Those billable services are for our occupational therapy, speech, school psych, and nursing services. And as mentioned before, they assist us with the compliance efforts that are necessary for this reporting. Item 12.2 is a service agreement with Child Focus Incorporated. This is a continuation of the, well, it's actually an annual agreement, but it is a continuation of our partnership with Child Focus to provide this year, three full-time, school-based therapists for our buildings. This is also, as I had mentioned, I think previously or as part of our strategic plan, we have been supporting two full-time therapists. Our Hayden Foundation supports Nagel and Child Focus also supports a little bit of our high schools. So this is a pretty substantial increase in services for all of our buildings. Item 12.3 is our service agreement with Maxim Healthcare. Maxim provides licensed nurses for our students who require those, the individualized nursing services. Right now, we are contracted with three full-time nurses. There is an increase of an hourly rate of $1 for 17-18. And item 12.4 is a contract or service agreement with Claremont County Educational Service Center. This past year, we have contracted with Claremont County to provide a hearing impaired supplemental support teacher to provide services for our hearing impaired and deaf students. And this is, again, the second year that we've been in contract with Claremont County for these services. Item 12.5 is a resolution to contract with Bell Fair Jewish Children's Bureau to provide educational services for a student that we have currently in residential placement in that particular facility. So the superintendent is recommending the board approve these service agreements in the resolution to contract as shown in items 12.1 to 12.5.
Any questions? Mr. Tepper. Do you want?
Yes, item 13.1, it's an annual request that we make of the board to appoint a delegate and alternate for the Ohio School Board Association Business Meeting.
All right. So Randy will definitely be the delegate. Jim, are you intending to go to that or you don't know at this point?
I, it is in my calendar, the only likely yes.
Do you want to be the alternate or do you want someone else to do it?
I'll be the alternate if there's an issue in Randy. Or, I mean, no, I can't imagine any.
That stops.
But Randy isn't there, so.
All right. So do we need to say that now or can we just do this part of the incentive agenda? Okay.
Item 13.2, it's another annual vote to the board to approve the temporary appropriations to begin a new fiscal year, 21. This will serve as interim measure to operate the district until the board adopts permanent appropriations sometime in October 4. Many of the funds, this is the, we believe is the appropriation. We'll actually look at, work with Tammy's office and others to fine tune what that would be between now and September. But the general fund, I know right now is pretty much what we believe it will be as well as the building fund, the permanent improvement fund. Some of those larger funds have been really vetted to this point. So it's recommended the board adopt the temporary appropriations at the fund level for all district funds that are presented. And the treasures report, item 13.3. We have our donations, $13,000 in donations in the month of May, many scholarships, after prom donations, so we appreciate all the support of our partners. Item B is a statement of board accounts. All accounts is, this is through the end of May, but all accounts are in good condition. We do have five federals that are waiting for some revenue requests, but they're all meeting their criteria to be in a negative position at this point. Item C and D and E kind of gives you a snapshot of the revenue and expenditures. Revenue side, we're just a little bit over what the revenue projected was for the year. We did have some, we had one of their Medicaid reimbursements was in arrears last year, so we did get that one item put over as well as some of the tuition payments. We got a double helping of that because it was missed last June, so we got it in July and August of this year. So this is the time of year when those are kind of rolling into place. D and E, expenditures or expenditures. We've 87.63% of our appropriations have been spattered in numbers. We did have the board approve moving of $4 million in appropriations. We're not planning to do that because it was there just as caution areas. We had some facility projects that I'm not really sure how we were going to fund those and we needed to have those funded to get them started. So, but we cannot use that appropriation. So the, when you take out that on the annual appropriation, we're pretty much right on the money with where we're spending will be at the end of May. F is our monthly bank reconciliation. G is our investment portfolio. One thing we added at this time to get, is the general fund investment portfolio. We've always done the bond. We have bond of time, the Stanahan Scholarship, let me give you the list of adjustments there in the general fund as well. H is amendments to the appropriation, one small increase to one of our athletic accounts to pay for some terminal expenses. No change to the general fund. I is travel allowance. The IRS rates changed, so the miles rate is now 53.5 effective 7/1. That matches the IRS 2017 standard mileage allowance. J is the establishment of a petty cash fund. K and L are district support organizations and district community groups that are really the partners in the lifeblood of our bond program. So we're very appreciative of those groups and this gives them, you know, once they approve a lease agreement and so forth, they can actually come on our property and do things and work in our buildings and so forth. And this recognizes them formally. And is a request to approve Rand Associates as our agent of record for our district employee benefits. And is a request to approve the board service fund. This allows for the board's expenses for meeting professional developments in 17-18 school year. And O is a resolution requesting advance payments. So we're requesting the board adopt a resolution requesting the county auditor to make advance payments during 17-18. This will be for tax year, calendar year 16 and 17, though we may for the next 12 months. That would be to cover current expenses in the general fund, PI fund, and the bond retirement fund obligations. So it's recommended the board approve this report as presented and then the whole consent agenda would be 9.2 through 13.3.
I move that we approve the items 9.2 through 13.3 as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion, any questions? Go, Mr. Tepper. Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes. Yes. Reports to the Board of Education, 42.1, Business Advisory Committee, Mr. Tepper.
Yeah, we have a meeting that was moved from May till June and we'll have a minutes of that next meeting, but we actually focused on facilities and kind of where we are with communications. There's a big positive newsletter that went out with a lot of great information, so that's a group we're very passionate about. But we're really focused on, you know, kind of facilities and where we are, how we're funding, what needs to be funded. More for the past minutes next.
Well, thank you. Policy Committee, that's me. We have nothing to report this time. Human Resources Committee, Jim?
We did not met, I suspect. And we will get together, what, September?
Finance Committee, Mr. Smith.
We met in May. We approved the minutes this evening and our next meeting will probably be in, probably late July after we close the books for this school year.
Curriculum and Student Services, Mr. Fruman?
We didn't have what I would call a formal meeting, but Ms. Adams did talk to me and to you about what she presented this evening. A discussion about that and we'll be back to the whole committee force here after Forrest gets back and formally upon his trace.
So it was very thoughtful and thorough for Mrs. Adams to include me in place of Tony. This was before your appointment. So it helped, I think, July, we'll understand what's going on better. Safety Committee, that is me as well. No meeting. I assume we will have a meeting sometime in the future? Yes. Forest Hills Foundation. We did have a meeting. There was a short meeting at Ivy Hills Country Club on June 14, 2017, and the reason the meeting was short was because new board members were welcomed and there was orientation. And so the rest of the meeting was primarily for a little bit of socializing and meeting the new board members. As far as the actual meeting, I will give you some highlights. The treasure report indicated that the fundraising goal of $180,000 is $144,000. I believe the year end will be June 30th of this month of 2017. The soiree is scheduled for October 14, 2017. For those of you who have attended in the past, I believe you got an email telling you that that's when it will be. Sponsors are needed and more information to come on that. The distinguished alumni date is changed to March 16, 2018, which will be a time when more focus and more attendance. It's a good change.
March, I think it's March 9.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, I think I said March 16, but I think we've all changed it.
Okay. Thank you. Dee Stone.
It's March.
It's official. It's March 9, 2018. Forest Hills 5K, this is awesome. Over 1,900 runners and walkers. Mr. Frumman. And Mrs. listener, participated at $47,000 to date has been raised. There may be additional ones. Next meeting. Program initiative indicated that the grant period for next year is just open. Early stages of planning for destination imagination manager training are in the works. So that's it. There is no meeting in July. The next meeting will be August the 9th at 6:30 PM at Central Office. Next is, sorry, Legislative Liaison, report ready.
Before we go into that, let me just make, point out one thing from the foundation. Now that Tracy is on the Board of Education, she's a member, was a member of the Forest Hills Foundation for Education and graciously agreed to step down for the period of the balance of this year so that we then only have two Board of Education members or members of the Forest Hills Foundation for Education Board. So appreciate your willingness to look on that out.
But she's coming back.
Yes. That's why I said.
January is back.
Legislative Liaison, Representative Ringman, I think covered everything that needed to be discussed. A couple of things I did want to point out, though. Even though the numbers he shared with me, which I forwarded this afternoon, look, you know, it's hard to celebrate, break even because traditionally, there's been some type of increase to cover increased costs. But in this case, zero is a good thing. It could have been much worse and it is for some school districts. But also, you have to remember that it's not official until after the governor gets through with his veto pen. So we can't rest easy until we see the final, final numbers. Another thing I wanted to point out was, Tom mentioned that the federal budget is about 8% of school district's budget of the state of Ohio. For us, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a little bit less than 3, I think. So what they give us compared to, he was talking about mandates, what they, the cost of the federal mandates is huge. It's the 3%, no way near covers what they demand that we do. And so that's a little bit out of balance and unfair and I wish there was something to be done about that, but that's the federal government. Last thing I wanted to point out, I was appointed to serve on a state committee by the state superintendent for assessments and this committee met March, April, May, and we had a meeting in June. And we finally put together a summary and it was forwarded to the state superintendent who made the presentation to the Board of Education. But I wanted to point out that I got a lot of help from Anita Eschelman and Wendy Strickler. I was really, really impressed with the, that's not usually my area, and the complexity that's involved in that and their knowledge and expertise in that area, including the superintendent, who by the way, filled in for me twice in Columbus, which I was very grateful for. grateful for. But I was really impressed with their knowledge and expertise in the unbelievable complexities. You know, state budget point was complex, so is this assessment stuff. But anyway, so I just wanted to thank all three of those individuals for their help in supporting me in that position, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Lawber, are you here? For the Forest Hills Teachers Association.
Well, first, I want to say good evening, and welcome back, Tracy. And since everybody seems to be finding jobs for you, I won't tonight. With that, I just want to say with the work of negotiations and our contract complete, and the future improving our relations, and the things that came out through that as we continue forward, the association is going to move itself towards a little bit more working towards collectively, towards concepts of teaching and learning. And this, obviously, Mr. Smith even mentions tonight, many of our ideas around testing and items around graduations and so forth. So with that, just pretty simple things. Mrs. Carney had tonight talked a little bit about OTES, and actually, from our association's side, we're pretty supportive of OTES. Obviously, from us, with that kind of percentage, it's effective. It does its job well. We worked really well, as our small group did. As we started that whole process, it does provide us a lot of structure, it keeps it consistent, and it, you know, what we're hoping to do is make sure all teachers receive a fair and equitable format for evaluation. Secondly, is the numerous funding specs that are in the budget. And one in particular that we're really concerned about and want to look at is a tax system that is fair, equitable, and capable of generating sufficient resources to adequately fund state programs and produce a strong state economy. With that being said, is looking at concepts every time we have an unfunded mandate, how do we deal with that? So from the association's end, we're trying to make sure we're lobbying and working on that system as well. Thirdly, is maintaining our mentor system. We talked about tonight, one of the big ones, and it's, I was looking at it again, it's just like a whole line item, it's a $5 million budget cut, but it just says, reduction of the regressive program that's just gone. It takes a lot for our young teachers as they come in the door and retaining them. We have a lot invested in these people financially, as well as in professional development. So the association's, one of its main concepts is working to help us come up with ways to maintain it. However, for the young people that have been through it, those of us who are educators can tell you that the system that was in place is very, very thorough, but also a lot of extra work. Puts a lot of stress on those teachers, puts a lot of pressure on them, a lot of jumping through a lot of hoops. So we like to try to come up with a way to help us, help them support within the district, and maintain good systems for our young teachers as they come through, and maintain their professional development as well. And then obviously, of course, is the eliminations of testing, and so far, I've only seen two. I wonder why those two, but as you guys may know, they're social studies, but trying to make sure that we see how are those changes in formats going to affect our classrooms. And then last but not least, are the graduation changes for 2018. The state is saying there is 38,000 students who are graduating, and the predictions around those changes. Here in Forest Hills, the criterion basis, I'm sure, is solid, but also making sure we're in line with that, and making sure that our staff and our students are working collectively towards that. Any questions? Thank you.
We do have an executive session this evening. Randy, could you read, please?
Sure. Senator, how revise code section 121.22. I hereby move that the board adjourned executive session for the purpose of considering the employment deployment, special discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official.
Do we need G3 as well?
We could, we could put that in.
He's, he's here, right?
He is, okay. Can you? Yes, he will. Okay. So G3.
Senator, how revise code section 121.22, G3. I hereby move that the board adjourned to executive session to meet with board legal counsel, discuss disputes involving the board and/or school district that are subject of pending or imminent court action.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mr. Hubner?
Yes.
Yes. We do not intend to take any action after we cover executive session. So the next meeting is July 10, 2017. It's kind of a short, short time period between now and then, but we'll be right here at 7:00 AM. Excuse me, my bad. It says, maybe we'll work and comment on that. Where is it?
Here.
Okay, I was right. Thank you for coming, everyone. Have a happy summer. Thank you.